It's all good.
Okay. All right, nice to see you. Brown. We're usually Lone Rangers, pretty much sitting in here. So anyways, good to see several people today. Um, we'll ask Kelly if she'll do our opening invocation and Dawn, would you lead the pledge, please?
Yes, sir.
If you'll join me. Dear heavenly father, we thank you first and foremost for all the blessings that you provide us, Lord. We pray for our country, we pray for our state and our citizens of Greenbrier County, Lord. We just lift them up to you and we pray that you will be with them and lead, guide and direct them in everything they do. Or we pray for the commissioners today as they conduct the county business. May they keep you in mind when they are doing the best for our citizens of this Greenbrier County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, so the meeting, first item under regular businesses approved amendments of the September ninth regular meeting. Y'all had a chance to review those, do we have a motion?
Uh, I would make a motion to approve those minutes as they've been presented.
Okay, any question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Settlement states, Mary Ingalls, our fiduciary supervisor.
I have the following three estates ready for final settlement. Betty Ruth Blankenship, Kevin Wayne Boden and Lois Mary Speeden. All the states are in good order.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the final settlements as presented?
Same way.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Exonerations, county splits, consolidations, we have those as provided by code R N L or Cessar. Uh, do we have a motion to approve those as presented?
Uh, I would make a motion, um, uh, follow our review, we have eight exonerations and two improper's and I would make a motion to approve those as they've been presented.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, correct, there was three improper's.
Three.
Three improper's, I apologize. You are correct.
Okay. Fast as unanimously, financial approvals, problem McColliver County clerk, arts and rec transfer.
The buying arts and rec transfer from savings to checking. Encore community arts, two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and forty nine cents, that's for twenty five, twenty six. E S O D class continuation. L Z Ray Neal, seven thousand dollars for twenty four, twenty five run for the wall event for twenty twenty five. Orders to Main Street, one thousand three hundred dollars, that's for twenty four, twenty five market entertainment. Ronspur River Festival, twelve thousand dollars, that's for twenty four, twenty five, June, twenty twenty five event. The total of twenty three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty nine cents from savings to checking.
Okay, we have motion to to, um, transfer that money from savings to checking to pay the invoices.
Seven.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, budget revisions.
We have none.
None.
Wow.
No, that's a first.
Uh, line transfer?
None.
Yeah.
What?
Okay, and over here we have the bills and invoices for the last couple of weeks, including the, um, utilities. They've been looked at and signed off on by the commission, so do we have a motion to pay the invoices as presented?
I make a motion to pay the bills as they have been presented to us.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have a presentation this morning from the C V B on their, with their annual report, so Carol, we'll turn it over to you.
And thank you commissioners for allowing us to come today, present our annual report. Um, it's an honor for us to be the official destination marketing organization of Greenbrier County and it's something that we love to do and take very seriously. Uh, before I get into everything I want to talk about today, um, just want to recognize some folks. Um, Commissioner Tammy Tenter is the county, um, representative on our board and so we appreciate her very much. Um, I also have some folks with me, uh, Mike Dotson, who was with prior property, Mike is the vice president of our board. And then I have some, um, important staff members with me, Delala Dixon, who's our director of operations. She pays all the bills and makes sure that the building and everything and, and I am, you know, pretty much, um, in line. And Mary Cole Deed, who runs our visitor center, who is of course the, the face and the welcome committee that, that we have. So thank you guys for being here tonight, this morning. So used to go in the, the meetings at night, so, um, as you guys know, last year we, um, started about this time of year operating under a new D B A, Experience Greenbrier Valley, because Greenbrier County Convention and Visitors Bureau is a mouthful. And we think Experience Greenbrier Valley tells a little bit more about what we do. Um, for the sake of folks that may be, um, watching online and maybe in the audience that don't know a lot about us. Um, we are funded by the bed tax and we receive half of the bed tax from, uh, Greenbrier County, Lewisburg, White Sulphur Springs, Alderson and Ronspur. We were established in two thousand and one after the county passed the bed tax in two thousand. So actually in January, um, of the coming year, we want to be twenty five years old, so we'll be celebrating a silver anniversary. Um, we have a board member of, of twenty board members, um, representing all of our funding agencies, hotels, different attractions, at large, um, businesses, uh, we have eleven staff, five full-time, four part-time and two part-part-time. So we have a few that come in just when we need to fill some, um, vacancies if someone needs help or whatever. And so we've got a really great staff that does a great job, who gets, constantly gets Google reviews. People take the time to go online and talk about how amazing our visitor center and our staff is and that, that sure does mean a lot. Um, just to talk about the C V B a little bit, we are credited through the West Virginia Association of Convention and Visitors bureaus. We have been since two thousand and six when they started this program. We're actually up for accreditation right now, I'm working on the application. And we turn in everything from our visitors guide, our website, um, our strategic marketing plan, a lot of different things go into that. And back in two thousand and one, the legislature passed a bill, it was Senate Bill four eighty-eight, it's an oversight bill to really kind of, um, keep C V Bs in check. Uh, we at the C V B Association, I'm, um, been on that executive committee for a long time now. Can you remember how long, I'm currently the vice president of that organization. We supported that because we noticed that the Secretary of State's office, there were over twenty sixty and seventy Convention and Visitors bureaus on the books. And you all know that there are only fifty-five counties in our small state. As it was just too many and then we wanted to make sure we could do something to keep those in check and to make sure that people were living up to the standards that the association set and what's really set by the industry as a whole. So, um, as part of that, each year we do an annual report. Of course, I've been reporting to you guys, you know, annually every year. But, um, this week, there's a report that's due that I'll send to the state auditor's office, the West Virginia Joint Committee on Government Finance and to the W B A C V B, just to show our, um, our financials, um, our latest audit, our report that you all have in front of you and all those types of things. Right now, there's a moratorium on new C V Bs until next year and we'll probably be working to try to get that extended as well. Because our goal is for there to be less C V Bs for people in areas where they can take that money, pull it together and make, you know, get more bang for the buck, so that's really kind of what we do. Um, of course, our mission is to impact the area's economy by marketing it as a premier tourism destination. Um, I think it goes without saying that Greenbrier County is a premier tourism destination and, and has been since the late seventeen hundreds, honestly. Um, we don't have numbers for twenty twenty-four yet, but the economic impact numbers for Greenbrier County in twenty-three were pretty impressive. Thirty, three hundred and ninety-nine point four million dollars in direct spending. Now, that's not an abstract economic impact number, that's a number that they can track, that we know visitors spent that much just right here in Greenbrier County. That puts us fifth in all of this, all of the counties, only behind those that have the big, um, uh, casinos where people can, you know, walk in off the street and play those types of things. Um, two thousand nine hundred and eight direct jobs, a hundred and twenty-three million in employment earnings and forty-one point seven three million in state and local taxes, so state and bed taxes. And so that same equals a total of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars per household in Greenbrier County. So if it wasn't for tourism and the taxes and the money that it brings into our county, each household in Greenbrier County would have to pay that two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars to keep services where they are right now. That, I don't know about you, but that's a lot of money to me. And that really makes a big difference. Um, and, and you know, and tourism really has that halo effect, we know that tourism is, is the welcome mat. People come here and they visit here and they decide to move here and bring a business here. So it's very far-reaching and really he, makes a huge, um, amount of difference. Um, in our marketing, our goal is, is to reach people kind of in that dreaming or planning stage. All of our marketing is digital, um, you know, when I started here, we would take a marketing plan and say, we want to put ads in all these magazines and you were pretty much done for the year, not the way it is anymore. Um, we are constantly working with our agency to record, um, while we're more time and we're reaching out to meet those target markets, which are couples. You'll see we have the certified, um, romantic destination, Greenbrier Valley, the sticker that's on the visitor's guide. Um, we, we decided we were certified and that's really all it takes, right? Say you're something, you can be something, so, um, we look at, the markets we're looking at are Gen Xers, Boomers, um, Charleston Huntington, Reno Glenfer, Pittsburgh, Columbus, Washington DC is a huge market for us. Um, Charlotte is also where we market, they're not a huge drive market for us, but as you all know, we have that, uh, flight to Charlotte. And it's very important that we try to stay in that market and let people know that we're here. And then when they go looking, they can see that they can get here pretty easily and, and pretty inexpensively. And, um, I don't know about you, but I would fly here versus driving up, you know, the seventy-seven. It could be a challenge. Um, we don't market in the Chicago market because one or two ads would be our entire marketing budget. It's just a market that we just can't afford to be in. Um, so of course I just mentioned our visitor's guide, we print about sixty-five thousand of those. They are our fulfillment piece, um, we think it's a very beautiful guide, we won an award for it last year at the West Virginia Department of Tourism, Stars of the Industry. Um, everything is pretty much designed in-house, Beth, our marketing director, writes all the content, um. Delala and Mary Cole have been selling ads this year, it, it's truly a group effort, we're always very proud of this and it looks very much like a magazine and I would put it up to any visitor's guide, honestly, anywhere in the country. And believe me, we asked for them so we can see what everybody else is doing, so, um. Our media is also huge for us, I put, um, copies of a cou- couple of articles that just came out last week, um, in your packet. We had a writer from, um, uh, she lives up near the Hamptons and writes for the Montox Sun. Um, this is a little magazine that, that's put out between the Hamptons and Manhattan. So I think that sounds like a pretty good market for us, but she came here and did a wonderful, um, article and if, when you get time to look through it, she did something that I've never seen a travel writer do since I've been here, is that she talked about the places, but then she talked about the staff. And she made it really human and really focused on a lot of people who were the ones that are really making the difference. And I, that, I think that meant a lot to me, it meant a lot to us at the C V B and I know it meant a lot to those staff to, to get that recognition in something like this. We were also, I mentioned in Atlanta Magazine as a favorite southern mountain getaway for high altitude fun. Of course, you guys know, we have, um, been successful in getting Wolfsburg named for the third year in a row as the best small town food scene. We do have a great food scene and that honestly extends over into White Sulphur as well. And so we're very proud of that and consider ourselves a foodie destination. Uh, we did an all-out social media campaign and we're successful at that. Um, Valerie, who is our director of public relations, did a great job of making all of that happen. We do a festival and event sponsorship program, we set aside about twenty thousand dollars every year, um, for events. Um, the last time Hilling Appalachia was here, we sponsored them up to, um, five thousand dollars. Um, you know, this summer, we had a lot of great groups, the state fair is doing an amazing job of bringing groups and using that base. We had the airstream rally in May, the New Mar group in June that came in. And the great thing about them though is that those people brought their own beds with them, so we could still fill hotels up. And they did, but they were here and brought their own bed with them, so they were still here spending money. Um, the Wild Trails Festival, which is the festival that, um, Kelly and her staff had wanted to state fair, was a three-day music festival. It was a huge success and I think that's something we'll probably be seeing here for years to come. Um, they had seven thousand one hundred and fifty people and they sold tickets to people from forty-one states and five Canadian provinces. And they're, they've got a lot of national attention for that. So things that are coming up, um, it's really hard to believe, we've been on our visitor center for fifteen years this July. I don't know how that happened so quickly because it feels like just yesterday to me, but we've got, uh, just a few renovations, some makeovers we need to do, we need some new, um, furniture, we need to do some painting, update some technology, we'll be working on that. Um, we're, uh, always trying to help our partners and educate them on what's going on in the industry as far as marketing. Um, it's really hard to keep up, especially now with artificial intelligence and that's something that we're al- always working with and trying to figure out how we can work with them so we can, you know, be relevant and keep people coming to our website. So we're doing a program called Get, Get Listed to teach businesses how to make sure they're getting their Google, um, business online and getting on the state's website, helping to do their listing on our website. Uh, we'll be doing our annual planning with our agency in November. Um, my entire staff, the full-time, part-time and my part-part-times are all, uh, part of a certified West Virginia Welcome Crew. Um, Secretary Chelsea Ruby worked with, um, one of the, um, colleges up in the, uh, I guess in the Eastern Panhandle, they have a great online customer service and tourism training program. You can go through two of the modules and win a T-shirt that says, I'm a local. And we took a picture of all of our staff in, I'm a local and it just, it, it goes over the things that, that we think should just be common sense, but they aren't to everyone. And so that's where we want to really try to get as many businesses as possible in the Greenbrier Valley to complete that. Um, if you complete all twelve of the modules, you can actually earn our credit, uh, college credit for that. And so we're really also excited about everything that's going on, on the other end of the county with the Meadow River Rail Trail. It's, it's been amazing, I've, I've seen it from start to finish to when it was just an idea. And now we're, we're getting close to the end, I know that, um, Matt Ford has done an amazing job and I just thank you all for your support and, and keeping him going on that because I really think that that could be, um, a game changer. And as you guys know, I'm a Ray Neal native, that's where I grew up and it's very, very close to my heart. So very excited to see what can happen from that project. So I know that's a lot and I'm sorry if I talk too much, but, um, again, just want to thank you all for your support and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
I don't have any questions, I just like comment that, you know, I've been on boards before, previously with most of the guys back there and you. Y'all have come a long way over the years and, uh, it's, uh, doing a great job for the county, I think, so I appreciate it. Just want you to know, we appreciate you, what you do and everything.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
You do a tremendous job and you, uh, uh, make Greenbrier County look good in all facets.
Thank you. That means a lot, as I said, we love what we do and we hope that that shows in everything that we do. We're, uh, we're always looking for new ways to, to make sure we're keeping relevant and telling people just how wonderful our beautiful home is.
Great.
Thank you also.
Thank you guys, appreciate you all being here.
Give the guys a minute or two if they.
Thank you.
They probably don't want to stay for the boring business. Yeah. Hey, we'll, we'll stay for this. Okay, the other presentation we have is, uh, a little different, but we appreciate, uh, the Mountain Valley Pipeline has a presentation that, uh, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
We have, uh, Daniel Hall here and Daniel is a commissioner in, um, Raleigh County. He was a past senator and you were a senator when the, uh, um, uh, bed tax, uh, were you a senator in two thousand when the bed tax?
Before my time.
Okay, that was before your time.
And then later.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll let you hand, we'll hand it over.
Thanks for allowing me to come by and speak with you for just a minute, uh, as Commissioner said, uh, uh, in my other full-time job, I'm kind of commissioner, uh, in Raleigh County. I know, we, by the way, we love, uh, Greenbrier County and that the ladies left, I was going to brag on the good work they do here. Uh, people from Raleigh County love to come over here and come to the fair and go to, come to the restaurants. I just brought my wife over here to one of the restaurants for her birthday a couple of weeks ago. So, uh, we love to come over here and, and see, uh, Greenbrier County in Wolfsburg, so y'all doing a great job over here. Keep, keep marketing because I, I was going to say, if they left, y'all need to figure out how to run a bus.
From over there to here?
From Beckley and I'm telling you, I think you can fill up on Saturdays for people to come over here to the restaurants.
Very true.
They didn't have to drive back after a pass of wine.
Right, true.
Um, anyway, so that's my commentary with that, but thanks for having me here. In my, uh, so in my other job, I do consulting, government relations work. And I am now representing the, the, uh, pipeline, uh, and, uh, as you know, that pipeline came through this area a couple of years ago. Went into effect, an operation in June of last year, it was a big, big ordeal for a long time, but it's now been moving gas through, a little West Virginia down, down south. Um, it's, it's, uh, doing what it's supposed to do. And so demand is actually higher than was expected this fast. And so they're looking to expand already, not with a new pipeline, but with increased, increased compression contracts. So, um, there are, there are three current compressors in the state of West Virginia, one is in Wesel County at the start, one's in the middle in Braxton County, and then the other one is down here, it's actually crossed the line at Fayette County, but you will throw a rock to see, you know, you're right on the line over there. And so, um, so M V P, uh, has this new project, they're calling M V P Boost, where they're just going to, um, it all goes through and, and they are going to boost the compression and they're building another compressor station down around, uh, Reno area. And so that, they're in the process of starting all that construction now. We anticipate continuing to just do good things for, uh, the gas industry and West Virginia delivered product to customers that need it most. Um, and, and, and part of all that, M V P wants to be a, a good community partner. And so they do have a grant program that, that, uh, that, to help out, uh, specifically with, you know, public safety and power departments and a variety of different things. But they want to be good community partners and, um, your Homeland Security Director applied for a grant, uh, and we are happy today to, to bring a check and present that to you. And it is for, uh, thirty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, I think, uh, Director said that he might be using that for some drone software. So, yeah, very good.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it very much. We're working with that, uh, as Mr. Hall mentioned, uh, our new drone was purchased a couple of months ago. We've, uh, started doing some training with it and there's actually some software that, uh, Mike and I learned about in our classes that can help with search and rescue uh, as far as pixels and things like that and colors, so I think he's going to go a long way out there, very much appreciated. Could we get a picture?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you guys want to come up here and, and you can present that again and take a picture.
I don't know, I don't know the take care of that experience. You sure? I don't care if they, yeah, we're going to do a social media thing about it. Okay, you're any props for that?
Sure, buddy, good to see you.
Oh, no, you're fine.
So you, you want me to hold it?
Yep.
Hold your checker, I'll get it. I'll let it do it this way.
Yeah, great.
You hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll reach out to you. I have any cards, just, yeah, anything, I will, great, thank you, thanks, sir. Take care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
We'll see us in Raleigh.
Will do, come back to see us here.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Uh, open bids received for courthouse window replacement project.
I wouldn't sure to offer all the.
Have a good day, everyone.
Thanks for being here, Don.
Okay, uh, the bid that I've got to open is from West Virginia Glass Company. And, uh, Wolfsburg, West Virginia.
I think they're Beckley.
Beckley, oh, that's just where he's sent us, I'm sorry.
Beckley.
I can't hardly read, right, I can't hardly read or write on it, but, uh, anyway. Their total bid price is four hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
And, uh, the bid that I opened is from Adam Wanger Contracting, uh, from White Sulphur Springs. A total estimated cost, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, two hundred and eighty thousand, two ten from Adam and West Virginia Glass for sixty-two thirty-seven. Okay, now, we'll take these, uh, bids, uh, review them, make sure that all the documentation's in there, it's required and everything, so we can, uh, and then we'll, uh, approve, approval of, uh, award at later date. Okay, open bids received for courthouse drainage project. Uh, we've had some questions and.
We didn't receive any bids.
We, well, we didn't receive any bids, but we have some questions on the, uh, engineering drawings and, uh, some possible problems there, so that, our questions there that we've got to get answered, so. Anyway, we'll, uh, withdraw that, open any bids or do anything on the drainage project at this time. Number three, open bids received for managed service provider, R F P.
We received none.
We didn't.
We received none. Okay, consideration of payment for draw request number thirteen with a Greenbrier County Gig Ready broadband project and, do we have anybody on?
Amanda.
Amanda, are you there?
I'm here, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so we have draw request number thirteen for the Greenbrier Gig Ready, Gig Ready project. Um, this one includes two invoices to the engineering firm Thompson and Litton for their engineering and design services on this project, uh, for the months of July and August of twenty twenty-five. So the first invoice is in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, that's the total amount. Twenty-five percent would come from the, the TIF as the matching funds and that amount is five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. And the remaining seventy-five percent would be grant funds, which is fifteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. The second invoice, the total amount is twenty thousand, fifty dollars for the matching portion from the TIF funds will be five thousand, twelve dollars. For the matching portion from the TIF funds will be five thousand, twelve dollars and fifty cents. And the grant portion of the seventy-five percent of that invoice would be fifteen thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So the total amount for this draw request is forty thousand, five hundred dollars. The total amount to be requested from the matching funds would be ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the total amount requested from grant funds is thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Anybody have any questions for Amanda on that?
Amanda, does any of this include the make-ready? Did you, did she already say that?
Yeah, well, it, it sounds like from what she said that it's all designed. So, so none of this would include the make-ready that, so we would be able to approve just the twenty-five percent match to be paid by the commission today. Is that correct, Amanda?
Correct. Yeah, these are just engineering invoices, so no make-ready is included in these.
I make a motion to approve the payment of ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the draw request number thirteen.
Okay.
Second? No, we don't have a second.
No, we have a second. That's all right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration, grant application.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda, I'm sorry. Consideration, grant application to be submitted by Greenbrier County Community Corrections to the West Virginia First Foundation.
I'll leave you there. Okay. Hi, mom. So there is a grant that just opened up through the First Foundation. Unfortunately, it is due October tenth. So I wanted to tone and basically get your all's permission to apply for the grant. What I would be asking for is, the first thing would be a wellness event. It would be a three-day event held at the day report. We would be partnering with WDSOM and the Health Department. Bridgette has already given us her, yeah, we could do this, because I wanted to talk to her before we even considered this. So basically, the Health Department would come down to the day report for the three days. They would be on site. And they would be offering things such as HIV testing, STD, Hep B testing. They would be doing pneumonia vaccines, COVID vaccines. They would be doing blood pressure, sugar checks. So any of our participants would be able to come in and get all this testing done for free. Their results, of course, would be confidential and would only be given back to them. But I think with the population of people that we serve, that this testing is very, very much needed. Unfortunately, they are not going to go to the Health Department and ask for this testing. A lot of it's embarrassment. And so we feel like having it at, at the day report where they feel comfortable coming. It won't feel like they're at a clinic or a hospital. We feel like we're gonna get a lot of interest in this. So that's the first thing that I would be asking for funding for. Most of that funding would actually go back to the Health Department to pay them for their expenses on the testing and so forth. But that's the first thing. The second thing I would like to ask for is, I would like to purchase thirty-day bus passes from the Mountain Transit Authority. We have several participants that ride the MTA bus. And I feel like if we were able to give them a thirty-day bus pass as an incentive. For example, if they continually have negative drug screening, then they would have an incentive of a bus pass. Or if they're showing up for their groups or their therapy and that doing things that they're supposed to be doing, they graduate from a rehab center. So that would be the second thing I would be asking for. The bulk of that money would be a check, of course, written to the Mountain Transit Authority to purchase the tickets. The third thing and final thing that I would like to ask for is a contract therapist. This would be completely contract. We are current, our numbers are going way up. Between drug screening and programming, we are currently serving about two hundred and fifty people. And so we desperately need another contract therapist to help with all the overflow. You know, sometimes we have requests from home confinement to, hey, I've got this person and they're in crisis and they really need a therapist. So they are sending that person over for therapy. So it's not only are we serving the day report, we're also helping home confinement. We're helping probation. We have this instance, you know, with probation a lot. So we're helping several of the different departments within the judicial system with therapy and with groups. And so we really need another therapist. Three days a week is what I am looking to start them as. But again, it would solely be contract. There would be no expense to the county. I think in the grant, what I had figured out was asking for eighteen sessions a week. So basically, three days a week is basically the bulk of what I'm asking them for. So these are the three things that I would be writing into the grant. The grant can be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Awards will be given at the end of December. I don't know why it was such a very, very short timeframe to apply for the grant, but it's been very short. But, so that's why I'm here. It's due just around the corner, and so I wanted to get your all's thought on writing this grant for these three things, because if there were any issues that, you know, you all felt were present, then I would just take that thing out of the grant. So I just kind of wanted to get your feedback.
Okay, so, Amy, do you have any questions or?
Well, I, I think I would suggest that we have, you prepare the grant application, and our process is that we approve a grant application before submission to make sure everything that the application is in the application, as you said, meets the eligibility for expenses and whatnot for the county. So I definitely think we do need to see a final draft of the grant application before final review, but because of the timeline, we probably, I would, I would make a motion that we go ahead and, and approve the grant application pending final review by council and the commission. So that will give us the opportunity to look at what you prepared, confirm that everything is accurate, and then can be submitted in a timely manner to meet the requirements of the grant. But we, we do need to review all of that.
Would you want me to email each of you all a copy of the grant, or would you rather me print it and give a copy to Kelly?
Give it to Kelly. And Kelly will disseminate it to everybody.
Okay, I'll just give it.
If you can email it to me, that'd be great. I, I would suggest you do both if able.
Okay.
Just one copy would only be need to provide to Kelly.
Okay, I can do that. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for meeting with me.
Casey made a motion for that. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Okay. Number six, consideration of resolution for donation of office equipment and furniture to the Monroe County Commission. After we had, do what, sir?
I was just saying, I left the field table off there, because he barged, roughly, he said it most likely is something he needs. So I just left it off.
Okay. Following our renovations, change of office equipment, various things and things that we had taken out of the courthouses and was in surplus. We had a request and, Bridgette, you want to read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution of the Greenbrier County Commission, whereas the Greenbrier County Commission recognizes the importance of supporting neighboring counties in their administrative functions, and whereas Greenbrier County Commission has an inventory of office furniture and equipment that is no longer needed for its operations, and whereas Monroe County Commission has expressed an urgent need for additional office furniture and equipment to better serve its constituents, now therefore be it resolved that Greenbrier County Commission hereby authorizes the donation of the following described office furniture and equipment to the Monroe County Commission to be utilized within their courthouse. One table, three wall lockers, ten filing cabinets, three wall shelves, two plastic five drawer containers, or, excuse me, two plastic five drawer organizers, six desks, six wooden chairs without arms, one ten-foot wooden bench pew, custom desk and service counter removed from the previous circuit clerk's office. Be it further resolved that the Greenbrier County Commission shall provide any necessary documents to facilitate the transfer of ownership of said items. Be it further resolved that the Greenbrier County Commission expresses its sincere hope that this donation will assist Monroe County Commission in assuring continuity of operations are achieved, adopted this twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I would make a, a motion to approve the resolution as presented with just one correction of the date of September, two thousand twenty-five to be corrected on there. Other than that, I would make a motion for approval.
Yeah. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, number seven, consideration of proclamation recognizing cybersecurity awareness month.
Glenn on there? Should be.
Yes, good morning.
Hey, Glenn, how are you?
I'm good, thanks. How's everybody there?
Doing well.
Good, good. Good to see you again. I just wanted to thank you.
Go ahead and introduce yourself and kind of explain what you're doing here.
Sure. My name's Glenn Angstadt, and I was a former Chief Information Officer at Chester County, Pennsylvania up until a few years ago, and then I had a, a career as a nine-one-one consultant for four years, and now I'm retired, except when I'm working for Greenbrier County, which is today. And I thank you for asking me to present this, this proclamation for your consideration. In support of Cybersecurity Awareness Month, October, excuse me, October, two thousand twenty-five, the commission priority of safeguarding county systems and information. Whereas the Greenbrier County Commission is committed to protecting the information and systems that support county operations and services, and whereas cybersecurity threats pose an increasing risk to local governments, public safety, and the personal data of our residents, and whereas a proactive approach to cybersecurity through awareness, training, strategic planning, and investment is essential to ensuring the continuity and integrity of county services. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Greenbrier County Commission hereby declares its full support for Cybersecurity Awareness Month and affirms the following cybersecurity priorities for the county. Number one, strengthening cyber incident readiness. The county will develop, update, and test formal cybersecurity response plans, conduct employee training on recognizing and preventing cyber threats, and continuously assess systems for potential vulnerabilities. Number two, securing public-facing services. We will ensure that the county public website and digital platforms are secure, accessible, and hosted under the trusted dot gov domain to protect users and promote public trust. Number three, establishing a secure technology governance framework. We will adopt a countywide IT strategy that includes cybersecurity standards, regular risk assessments, and well-defined roles and responsibilities to protect data and infrastructure. Be it further resolved that these efforts demonstrate the commission's commitment to defending Greenbrier County against cyber threats, protecting our residents' data, and ensuring the continued operation of essential government services, given under my hand and seal of Greenbrier County this twenty-third day of September, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Glenn? Do you have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, no other comments?
No, thank you, Glenn. I appreciate your work on this. Appreciate your effort in pushing us forward to, to include this and make it a confirmed resolution. We thank you.
Thank you for your, your support. Appreciate that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Okay, consideration of Greenbrier County Investment Policy for Approval and Implementation. How to hit that on that?
Yeah, that is for our investment policy that we have been working on drafting and for the county with CashVest three plus one that we had approved to work with back earlier in the year. And we have been working with them each month to get to a point where we can develop a investment policy for the county, which is something that the county does not have, to put in place to make sure that the county is looking at proper places to best make sure that we increase all liquidity on our funds to make sure that we're earning the best that we can and to make sure that we are following all protocol related to government investments. And one investment tool that we can utilize is our state investment pool that counties are able to participate in. And in order to do that and to even consider looking at, we have to have an investment policy. So not only for just good practice and protocol to have in place, since the county does not have it, but to consider looking at other options to invest some of our funds to be able to earn more interest and maximize the funds that the county has in a responsible way to be able to have this policy. And we've worked, council has worked with CashVest three plus one. I have, as well as Commissioner Holliday. And with that, I would, at this time, we have a few final reviews, one final review to look at. But I would request that we consider approval of the policy in place pending the final review by council and provide the opportunity for the president to sign that policy and put it in place.
Okay, you have comments on that?
Is that your mo, was that a motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number nine, confirmed separation of employment of Jeff Snyder from the Greenbrier County Home Confinement Office effective date September the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Data hard was January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. So we have a motion to.
I moved to. Separation of employment of Jeff Snyder from home confinement effective September twenty-two, twenty-five.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, our last two items on our agenda, number ten is discussion with council regarding the development of a property nuisance ordinance. And the other one is discussion with council regarding homeowner assurances in reference to Fort Springs, West Virginia elevation as a leftover FEMA project from two thousand sixteen. So do we have a motion to go into executive session at ten fifty-five?
On mine.
Okay, ten fifty-four.
Seven.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So.
Just a second. I'll switch this back over so you can. Just a second. I'll switch this back over so you can.